Good.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order, City of Bisbee Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session. It is October 3rd, 2024, 5:30 PM. And call the role, Michael Abelin.
Not here.
No, David Brown, no, David Cobb.
President.
Douglas Dunn.
Please excuse.
Alicia Eserty.
Here.
Sandy Huesman here, Doug Taylor.
Here.
And Mel Sowin, no, and Emmanuel Stewart.
Alright, great.
So Emmanuel, do you want to go ahead and present Agenda Number One?
Yeah, okay, so, update, what's happening right now is, this weekend, there's a Bisbee Bike Ways Festival at Lou Goldfield's land out on 80, out towards Douglas. And so we're gonna have a table there for the general plan update, and we're going to be reaching out, and we're gonna have a pop-up, we're gonna have some easels, we're gonna have the plan, we're gonna have a survey, get some sticky notes, get people's viewpoints and perspectives on visions for future Bisbee policies in the general plan. So, we're gonna be there probably mid-afternoon, there's gonna be a bike race, or a lot of other stuff, a bike rodeo, what else, pedal-powered smoothies, fun stuff. So if y'all wanna check that out, it's gonna be a fundraiser for the Bike Ways path. And we'll be there talking to people. Also, we're going to be at the trunk-or-treat event, Halloween, at Vista Park. So we're gonna be teaming up with the library and having a table next to theirs, and we can, you know, they can work on handing out candy, and we can possibly try to snag some parents, some parents and get some feedback from, you know, people who have little kids. So that would be fun. Also, you know, in the future, probably gonna set up a booth for farmers market. Maybe, potentially, the mariachi festival. So I just wanna be seen, the City of Bisbee's gonna be out there and just be seen by people, you know. I think that's important, to really just be representing the city in a lot of these big events. So, that's one thing that we're working on right now. Also, gonna start reaching out to stakeholders. That's it, a lot of it, yeah, working on, and then also looking at a lot of the stuff that you have told me, feedback from you all, and then feedback from people in the city. And maybe going to some boards, other boards and commissions, Bisbee Arts Commission, you know, Commission on Disabilities. And so, I'm starting to incorporate all of the stuff that you've told me into our plan. I'm going through a lot of the spreadsheets and the policies, and really working on just updating it. You know, and then also looking at other plans in the city, in other cities in Arizona, and other cities, other places. So, that's the update. That's all I have for the update right now. Yeah. And then I guess we're still on Agenda Item One. So essentially, this is a bullet point of all the agenda items, so you don't have to be like, okay, onto the next item. So, next item is, thinking about an overarching vision, have we talked a bit about an overarching vision for the city that we've wanted to really follow? Because I'm thinking about, particularly like I was looking at the Sedona Community Plan, and they kinda have like a page that kinda mentions their core values, and I was just gonna maybe run over some of those. You know, I guess, I know what our vision are, is our goals and our values are, but I'd like to think about what, you know, we wanna put in the forefront to say. You know, like for Sedona, the community plan, they are really focusing on livable and vibrant community, environmental protection, strengthening community, regional economic diversity, which I think that we're gonna be working on some of that, local business, responsible tourism, which is an interesting concept, and it'd be good to, you know, to dig deeper into that and honor and respect our environment and our heritage. So, what that kinda looks like, I guess, is they have a couple of bullet points, you know, they talk about essentially, you know, public spaces for people, diversity of people, welcoming all people of all walks of life, housing diversity, mobility, which, you know, we talked about all of these things. So, I don't know, I was thinking if we could potentially, you know, sort of have a session that would essentially be an overarching theme for what we wanna do in Bisbee. Yeah, so any thoughts on that?
I don't think we've talked about it.
We haven't talked about it.
No, we haven't, okay.
I like the Sedona one, that sounds good.
Yeah, they got core values, you know, they talk about, it's really, a lot of what we had talked about, covering a lot of the similar topics that we have, but they've kind of summarized it in like a three-page section of their general plan.
Is that their intro?
Yeah, it's towards the beginning of their plan, yeah.
I think that you have been listed that from us.
Yeah.
In meetings. I would think it's pretty easy to cobble in what we think.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that, you know.
It probably shouldn't just be us, this outreach thing you're doing should pick up some, you know, opinions.
Yeah, and then get more information from the community.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we definitely are.
You might have bullet point questions you ask people, you know.
Yeah.
What are your, what do you see the goals, or, you know, the elements, or whatever you wanna say.
Yeah. I'm actually gonna be assembling a survey for the upcoming events, and for also, I'm gonna be probably putting up a QR code so people can access it with their phones on bulletin boards. Also, I'm gonna print some paper surveys, drop them off at the Senior Center, and other places where people who might be more, maybe appreciate paper surveys more than digital surveys.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, where else do you think, so at the Senior Center, any other spot where paper surveys might be a good place to drop off them, drop them off?
Well, are you expecting immediate response, or are they taking them with them?
Taking them with them, like I thought I'd bring a stack, and then potentially, hmm, actually, at the Senior Center specifically, I was gonna maybe have them fill it out and then like leave them in a spot, maybe ask the people, you know, the staff.
So you could use, you could put it at the table at the Saturday market, and you would.
Sure, paper surveys, okay. Me at your table?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Is it too expensive to do an observer insert?
You know.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Beats mailing it out to everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you can get it online, if you're an online subscriber.
Yeah. Good, okay, observer insert, or ad, I guess, probably.
She talked to Nina, she has a big relationship with Laura.
Yeah. I can see, it's about time to turn the lights on.
I thought it was, I was kinda seeing how long we were gonna go.
Well, I'm the kind of person that like waits for the very last minute, and then I'm like, okay, what's on the lights on?
This is, you know, planning the zoning in the dark.
So, alright, so we got that, okay. And also, I have an outreach element. Any particular questions you think I should ask? I mean, I'm gonna craft a survey, you know, I'm gonna work on finding ways to really answer, to really create questions that are really gonna sort of give the answers, like instead of like, you know, like working on design, you know, no leading questions, and really trying to get where people are coming from. So, yeah, do you think, is there any ideas, any particular types of questions I could ask? You don't have to, what are the questions like, or anything, but anything you think that would be good to mention?
How about asking how important things are on some kind of scale?
Yeah.
And giving them the ideas of what, and then maybe lead the survey into some a little more challenging questions once you have a call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or some more open questions, which I think are somewhat challenging.
Yeah.
Yeah, the open-ended questions are hard for people to answer in a survey, but if you give them five choices, they, you know, they.
And they answer five of those, they're invested, and they'll be moral to doing the open questions.
Yeah.
Theoretically, I don't know, there's probably a.
Yeah.
Resource to tell you how to write a good survey.
Oh, there's plenty.
You probably took a course in it.
Yeah, right?
I did.
I did when I was in architecture school.
I did it too, I took a course in undergrad, and I took a course in, well, grad, in grad school, we covered survey writing, and actually conducted a survey, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did some street surveying in undergrad, and then in grad school, I wrote, I did an online survey and just basically got people to answer it, you know, so.
I kinda remember, was it our last meeting, or the one before, I can't remember if I missed a work session, talking about questions and wording of questions, I think we had something, was it?
Possibly, it's something I feel like we would be talking about, so.
I don't know how the city code is divided, but would whatever those headings be possible topics for?
Topics?
Questions, meaning, you know, like.
Oh, yeah, uh-huh, I mean, yeah, we could.
Like, we're talking here about like arts and coming up, community arts and culture.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that, how important is community arts and culture to you?
Yeah, right.
And maybe even you could add like, an option to say why, or something like that.
Yeah.
Or something to, again, start encourage that extra element of feedback.
Why, uh-huh, the why.
To kinda categorize as based on the general plan.
Exactly, yeah, and also what we want to talk about, the overarching vision, what our vision might include for the new plan that might not be covered in the, or what their vision for the new plan would be.
Right, that would be, yeah, cuz if you.
What are we missing?
Yeah, if you give them your questions that we've been discussing, it might miss something completely, you know, off the scales, that would be really great. So maybe there's something at the end that says, what would you like to see?
Yeah, definitely. Okay, that's good, that's good, what would you like, what are we missing? Okay.
Oh, that's another big open-ended question.
Yeah, no, maybe not that one.
Probably use it.
Yeah, awesome, okay. Next, I was gonna bring the.
Maybe at the end, one of those rare things, cuz you hate to get, I, like, don't answer surveys as a role, you know, today. But this one would be different, I suppose, but at the end say, how did you find the survey? Or can you rate the survey again on the scale of whatever, whatever, just to see what your feedback is in general for the people who take the time.
Looked like I didn't like it.
But here it is, 14 pages.
Right, exactly, oh my gosh, okay. Alicia, anything you wanna mention about that?
Oh, my, one thing, just talking with folks around town, I think is how they get their news source about what's going on at the City of Bisbee. I think that might be a good question, just to know how to communicate, to begin to communicate with everyone, you know, how they're getting their source.
Got it. Got it, great, thank you. Okay.
I didn't find this, I'm sorry, but would it be a good idea to have it available on the City of Bisbee website?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna do that.
They can actually take the survey on the website, less paper.
Yeah. I mean, I'm really not planning on using much paper at all, just the stack of surveys at the Senior Center, or maybe dropping it off at a, taking it to an event and like getting a couple, you know, just for those people that would rather do the paper survey, but I'm gonna have a big QR code, and just have people point their phone at it, and it'll take it to the survey directly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's really, yeah, how you could.
But, on the other side of that, would it like be prudent to have it available at City Hall? I'm sure that wouldn't be a problem, but also at the, at the library for people who aren't, can't have that, you know, don't want to exclude people because of their technical limitations.
Actually, I think the library's a great place.
Yeah, the library's a great place.
Yeah. Put paper surveys.
Well, you know, instead of an insert in the observer, if you put an ad with a QR code, you could also state that, you know, surveys are available to pick up at City Hall and the library. So if they do want a paper survey, they have access to one.
Or an article, you know.
Yeah.
I guess I could contact the, yeah, the reach. An article on a paper. Now that's, wow.
And we can turn my dad's barn into a theater, and we can put on a musical.
Oh, okay, article on paper, I'll contact them. That's great. Man, I didn't think about that, okay, yeah. Can, available. At library. And at City Hall. Yeah, that's fantastic, okay. Good deal, this is some fantastic.
Were you interviewed by the paper?
I was interviewed by the Sierra Vista paper.
But never by the Bisbee Observer as the new city planner? Well, that's an omission.
Ah, I know.
Seems to me.
Yeah, and I'm not one to toot my own horn, I wasn't like calling up, be like, hi, this is the new city planner, do you wanna write an article about me? But they did do, they did do an interview at the radio station.
Oh, cool.
Downtown Bisbee, so. Yeah, tell you what, had to talk on the radio. Anyway, yeah, anything else about the surveys that you wanna mention? Or vision?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay, the next one we've mentioned is the Parks and Open Space slash Recreation Element. So, you know, I was thinking a lot about, I'm gonna go to the Parks Commission, and Recreation Commission. Definitely, I'm thinking a lot about wanting to really talk, think about what we kinda need for, a lot of people come, you know, that I've talked to so far, said that we need more recreation facilities, especially down in San Jose, right? So I'm thinking about, you know, ways, you know, policies and goals and stuff, and just methods. One thing, one thing I have to really think about is what's available for our city, grants most likely, but other methods of, you know, funding to actually make these things happen, instead of like having a wish list, right? And then, and then you're sitting there with wishes, you know, so. I was looking at the, for open space element at Flagstaff, and they had, other policies include open space acquisition, conserve, conservation financing, so taxes and bonds, purchase of developments rights, which is interesting, zoning for public land forests. I don't know, that might be an interesting thing to look into more. And of course, the green infrastructure, we've been talking about that for quite some time with our streets and our roads, and a conservation land system, so. You know, we're thinking about like preserving wildlife habitat in the city, cuz we do have a lot of just open space in ours.
Yeah, we really do.
I mean, so much, and I would love to really keep on working with FMI, you know, in terms of like, potentially having open space for people to use, but also for conservation. So I'm really thinking about pushing that. So, you know.
I think we have a lot of great parks.
Yeah.
In town, but we also have that wild area surrounding us that has great trails and open areas, and I think that needs to be nurtured and taken care of, and, you know, if there's anything we can do to, as an outreach to that, so that it preserves it, I think it is, it is at some point an economic boost for the city.
Yes.
Isn't most of old Bisbee surrounded by BLM? I mean, I know there's some city-owned property behind some houses.
To the north, a lot of it's private land, a lot of it's FMI, a lot of it's private. Cuz like when I go to, when I go on the map and I look at who owns these like massive tracks and parcels, it's generally like one or two different people, so. And I ask about, I ask around about those people, and everybody's like, oh, they all never sell. It's like, we'll get ahold of something, and they're not letting it go, they might own a lot of stuff, and, you know, so I don't really know much about it, about these people, who they are, what their story is. All I know is that people, you know, have a lot, there's a lot of ownership up there, so. It'd be interesting if it was BLM land, cuz then we might be able to actually utilize it in some way or another.
Well, I know we have it around us.
Yeah, you have BLM, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so, you know, working on that, so. I'm gonna try to put together an element for the open space plan and recreation. I'm gonna talk a lot with the Parks and Recreation, you know, boards, and then gonna talk with the people in the different wards, you know, I'm gonna meet up with the council members, you know, sort of get their perspective on those, but yeah, you know, we've talked a lot about this, so. And then, another element I was gonna bring up was the environmental sustainability element, which we actually have an environmental sustainability plan that we've adopted, how many years? It's been, it's been, it's been a while. And I would like to incorporate more of those elements into the general plan, because that plan is, I don't know how many years, it's a bit, it's not super old, but it's like seven, maybe it was like in the late teens when it was written and adopted. And I think it's always really great, especially when you're thinking about future plans, so, you know, for the next 10 years, you wanna have something that's, you know, updated, so that reflects kind of current, cuz I always feel like whenever you're writing grants and stuff, and you're trying to, you know, push an idea, you know, or get funding, it's better to have a newer document than have something, instead of pointing to something that was written, you know, say 10 years previously. You know, since the dynamic nature of the cities are changing, so. So, but I was also looking at Flagstaff, they have a lot of really great policies, you know, I think.
Ask you a question about Flagstaff, do they?
Yeah.
This is an issue important to me.
Yeah.
And I think it's part of the Parks and Open Space and the environment and sustainability is the preservation of trees.
Yes.
And does Flagstaff have that?
Yes, what do they have?
Traveling across country this year, I saw a lot of cities are tree cities.
Yeah.
And I put an ordinance together, this is just.
So I haven't, have I told you that we're working on becoming a tree city?
Well, you know, I put an ordinance together, I think you probably, it crossed your desk, it must have.
Yeah.
And I got it for the DRB to preserve trees in old Bisbee. And I got a letter back from the city stating that they were not in the business of protecting trees.
Yeah. Well.
So I got an axe, no.
You just, they kinda put, they kinda put a damper on it a little bit.
Yeah, not even a damper, kind of a lid, and locked it down.
That's really interesting, and I do think, cities, even Tucson, of all places, is adopting treaty.
Well, it's important out here, more than Maine, let's say, Maine has so many trees, you know, you can't walk through some of the woods, but here, we really need it, and it does have a, and this is anecdotal, but I read, it does reduce the heat by 10 degrees, having trees.
National Geographic just did a big article on it about a year and a half ago, on urban trees.
I think they're really important.
Yeah.
And this past year, they, people have cut down a lot of them.
Yeah, it's really, it's starting to move into the mainstream, but, you know, some people haven't gotten the memo yet, but.
Trees are people too.
Is that a slogan from a campaign, or is that?
Yeah, it's gonna be, the trees are people.
Yeah.
We talk about animal community diversity, and maybe some specification of bird specifically, since we're kind of a bird part of the state, county, country. I don't know whether there's any bird city designation to go for.
That would help tourism, like, you know, people are really getting into birds, bird watching, and.
Yeah.
It's a.
So many kinds of connect with that kind of thing, it's very low impact.
You know, it's a beautiful thing, I think birds are great.
Yeah, maybe we could do a tourist survey, what do people come here for? I mean, I actually.
That would be cool, if you could figure that one out.
Yeah, right.
There's no beach. I've never really been able to put a finger on why we have so many tourists.
I think it's just the urban environment that down to Bill Bisbee.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'd love to know why.
Yeah.
History and art.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's all we have, that's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
History includes the old architecture.
Sure.
Yeah, and we have music, we actually have.
Well, it's art.
Per capita, we have great food and great music.
Also, neither, also neither one of those categories, and the way history and art.
Um, we do, you know, I think what's also very interesting is that, you know, I think towns that look like, that look like, you know, Bisbee, Old Bisbee, you know, I wouldn't be surprised, there's a lot of stuff that looks like that in like, kinda like around the part of the country where you're from, right? But interestingly, here, it's the sort of juxtaposition of this kind of European-ish or Eastern United States town with like these big red mountains, you know, and having it be in Arizona, you know, and it really is, it makes it such a unique place, you know.
It does, and the history of that development and why it happened is really interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, this, I forget to it, it's just that in Maine, there are a lot of people from Bisbee that live in Maine.
Really?
Yeah. Now, or have places to, you know, summer places, or whatever, but there are, like in Eastport, there are several people who moved from Bisbee to Eastport, it's sort of a, the same town on the coast.
Okay, Eastport's the same town of Bisbee, but it's on the coast.
Yeah, it looks similar, and it's on the coast.
Oh, okay.
But it's not a mining town, is it?
No, no, a fishing town, it's a.
Fishing town, of course, that makes sense.
The economy is built on fishing, huh?
Yeah, and it's a big port, it's the deepest port in the United States, the deepest harbor in the United States.
Harbor town, huh.
And it's a one-way street in Bisbee to.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, you just get on that street.
No, 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 but, Freeport's not coming to Bisbee, Bisbee's going to Freeport, it's Freeport.
Yeah, they're headed that way, but there's also a lot of people from Bisbee that spend time in Maine. It's really, you know, it's very much like Arizona, only, you know, in that it's, has a lot of rural, rural cities sort of connected by open land.
Yeah.
You know, we have an Alaska contingent.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood.
Yeah.
Quite appreciated.
Yeah, we really do, and at Market, we have several people who live in Alaska during the, during the summer, and set up at Market during the winter. Yeah, it's interesting, Bisbee's a very flexible, it's almost like a crossroads of the, of merchants and, you know, trade.
Yeah, yes, definitely. Yeah, it's interesting, finger on it, you know, like, trying to see what motivates people in the whole, you know, the city, especially seasonally too, I mean, that's kinda big, you know, we're starting to go back into our, into our busy season again, right?
Yeah, you know, this is our tourist season, whereas other places like on the East Coast, the summers are tourist season.
Yeah, yeah, so. Some of the other environmental goals, they do talk about forest health, native plants, watershed protect, protection, preparedness for extreme climate events, improving the ability of vulnerable community members to adapt. So something equity in, sort of like, community equity.
You might wanna get in touch with the Firewise people.
Yeah.
Cause that's, uh.
They're on the list, yes.
They're very organized and have been doing it a long time. Waterwise is another thing and I'm not sure. Really how that works. I know a little bit about Firewise.
Yeah. Firewise, Waterwise. It's interesting, I, I have a section of water and wastewater and so. I didn't really include too much to talk about that here today because, um. We, um. We have a document that was put together. Relatively recently, within the last couple of years, and it's the Bisbee Water Master Plan. So, and it's a big, it's a pretty lengthy document and it's really about water management here in the city. So I, I may say, create a section that references that document.
Yeah.
Um. That, what our last plan didn't really include, or it was very marginal or very brief. Was the, um. Community arts and culture, um. You know, cost of development, water and wastewater. These, these are pretty, all of these things I've added here. Are in almost every city's general plan now. I believe that we don't have to include all of these. Because we're, we're pretty small and we might fly under that radar just a smidge. But, um. You know, but I'm thinking like. And really, really just to like be, have a plan that really reflects the rest of the communities in Arizona, it's good to include these. Cause I think that they're worth talking about and I think that they're relevant to our, to our desires and our needs, right?
So if you, you know, Sandy just said it, it, arts is, you know, a huge chunk of tourism.
Yeah.
And well-being of citizens and, you know, it's for Bisbee, it's a big deal.
Yeah. So I, actually with the arts and culture element, um, which I, that's not, I don't think that one is required, but, um, Sedona has. Arts and, arts and culture element. And, um, they talk about, um. Essentially, they have their policy, one policy is expand the city's arts and cultural programs and partnerships. Uh, embrace, let's see, partnership programs that embrace aging with arts, culture and wellness activities. So we're including wellness in that one too. Uh, schools and youth and community events. Sponsor art experiences, either pop-up temporary or interactive. Uh, that highlights local artists, literary, visual, performing music. And then also preserve historic sites and celebrate Sedona's history, which we were, really work on celebrating our, you know. And preserving our historic, uh, elements and sites. Um. So I'm, you know, thinking about potential community partnerships. Um, I'd love to do art pop-up stuff, you know, I mean, I appreciate like, especially artists who wanna do something that's kind of. Maybe, uh. Uh, you know, I don't know, I don't know if we'd be involved, like, something like residency or a pop-up event.
Yeah.
Thing or something.
Residency would be cool, but that usually is done by private.
Yeah, that, we probably wouldn't be able to do that, but.
How about, um, the Fine Arts Council, I don't know if this.
I meet with them too.
Yeah, and they had an amazing event. It's gonna be two years now in the fall.
The show.
What is it?
The art show on, in the, uh.
Fine Arts Festival, I believe it was festival, right? And, and they.
It's in law.
Took over a little bit before your time. They, they had an amazing show in David Rose's building, Star Building, just an amazing.
That takes an awful lot of energy.
That does.
Enough. Then they had artists and, uh, what do you call it, street fair kind of thing.
Yeah.
On Saturday and Sunday, which I wasn't able to attend cause of work.
Yeah.
But, um, and then they didn't do it last year and I thought they were gonna do it again this year and. I, it, it depends on volunteers and whatever, but if that were something that maybe the tourism board could sponsor. I mean, they're talking about sponsored events like the Chili Cookoff. Something like this is a lot more representative than if there were something that were regular. Or semi-regular, the fact that.
Yeah.
They, they didn't repeat something that was so successful.
Yeah, it was, it was a really great thing to, to have it to go to.
I don't know how the city involves themselves in something like that, except for maybe the tourism board. Do you mean by them too, or the, I'm sorry, we don't have a tourism board, right? The, the, uh.
Oh, we have a department.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, you know, I have not, I have not, I've talked to them, I talk to them on occasion. But I haven't met with them. I shouldn't meet, I shouldn't.
Yeah, that would, it would be good because they can give you some, the, because it ties in with economics and art and you name it. Uh, the Arts Commission meets this, this Monday at five thirty.
I'm gonna go to that. I'm, I'm gonna go to there and I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna go to the public. Um. The sort of public hearing, not public, but like, we, we call to the public and tell them this is what I'm doing and I'm, and then I'm gonna be on the agenda for the next month.
And you might wanna see what, you know, I know that it was tough on the people that. Uh, put that festival on, but you may wanna see what you folks need. From the city to help you move along on that.
And my understanding is something like, like that can't come out of our tourism budget, it's called.
Probably, yeah, although there's a, there is, there is money. Uh, I don't know where it, you know, where it is, but there is money for the Arts Commission.
Yeah.
So they, they are, they are able to give grants.
To that, I have read that other cities in Arizona, cause I know that where that comes from, they use their tourism. You know, the bed breakfast tab for that specifically. Another resource might be, you can talk about residency, you know, um, Central School does a residency every year. I don't. Think that most people ever hear anything about it, you know, that's part of their program.
So they have res, residency.
Been around for decades and, you know, Jeff used to work for the city. So he would have any kind of history of how the city might have interacted with Central School project or still does.
Yeah.
They're definitely one of our.
They're a really good thing to have.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree. I mean, I talk with Pam and Jeff all the time, you know.
Yeah, right, so Jeff will talk to you here if I'm not, if I'm.
I'm sure. We talk about historic preservation stuff.
Yeah, he was involved in that, in the, 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 the original, uh, when I, when that lady asked last night about. Um, you know, how was it formed, Jeff was in that.
Yeah. Definitely. Yeah.
He's a resource.
He's like, no, no, no new windows. Um. Awesome, okay, so we have the art, yeah, I, I was thinking about arts and culture and economic. Growth. Um. You know, it's such a huge part of our economy as well.
Yeah. It, it's, that's right. And if we could, you know, and the, the other one that Sandy said was history.
Yeah.
I have been to towns in my travels that have, um, sound signage. That you can push a button and, you know, there's strategic locations of these signs. They're, they're really well done and they tell little bits of the history of the town and you can take yourself on a. On a walking tour. Some of it's just read the signs, you know, in some places, some have like a, a audio, uh, walking tour. Those are great, but they probably have to be sponsored by the city cause an individual probably couldn't do it.
Yeah.
We used to have great walking tour, um, brochures that we would have out at the museum.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, a real nice one and they pointed out what the buildings were in the past and, you know, the olivery and.
That Jeff wrote as a matter of fact, but. Yeah.
He gave someone else their credit for it, they were co-writing, but he said he didn't know what work in, for some reason didn't put his name out. They're still around.
I haven't, we haven't given them any for ages.
These are the ones that were kinda like, made like a big matchbook kind of thing that were available like three or four years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Just, just before COVID, yeah, I forget who was.
They used to have a horrendous map, but there was not, not from the museum, but the, uh. There was a map that was pretty wrong.
Okay.
Uh, that was given out at about, oh, probably about six years ago. But also, um. There is a, um. Virgil Hancock has written a book about Bisbee. He's at Saturday Market. And it's an amazing book. Uh, starts out from, from. The, you know, the start of the earth almost and.
Really?
And it's not boring, it's quick, but it, it goes through that to, to modern time now. And just really, uh. Uh, just excellent book.
That's gotta be the book with the blue cover then, huh?
I believe it is, with a picture of Bisbee on it.
Yeah.
It's about this big.
That sequence towards the beginning of the evolution of Earth is just, it's like an acid trip or something like that, okay.
So he, so he covers the pre, the pre-mining history of the area?
Yeah, well, it covers from pre-native American, you know, he, he talks about the geology and. And why the city or why this area was like it was and then.
Out the copper developed.
And, yeah, but also in the Americans like, because there was a spring and, you know, there's, there were all kinds of, uh, pluses.
Yeah.
And it's sort of, it just made it a logical evolution of this, of this city.
I think, I think it's important to. When you're, you're talking about the natural elements and you're talking about the, the culture and the people here that have come before. I think it's, um, important to include that element.
Yeah.
But the idea of have some, of having some kind of application or app, I'm sorry. Some kind of high-tech access for the.
Yeah.
For the kids today, things like that and to have it evolving, e- even if it might. Take some effort to get it going.
You mean a history element or what? How do you mean?
Uh, uh.
Like a, like a tour of the, you know, you could use the app and go all kinds of.
All that.
There is something on Camp Nakco that, I can't remember the woman's name. When I was working on the Camp Nakco project, she was at the, uh, U of A, wonderful human being. And you can put a GIS history element into that, into the GIS. And they did it for Camp Nakco, I think, I didn't even think of that, but that would take the place of signage and. And audio tapes and, you know, you name it, it could have all of it, yeah.
And you could have different people or entities contributing it to it, both of the museums. Potentially, uh, uh, Freeport MacMoran, you know, saying, is, how do you want your mind represented? To people who visit Bisbee or do you want us to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That kind of thing and the walking tours and the, and the birds and Firewise and I, you know, cause you plug into what you're interested in, right? So the more we're able to put up and.
It's a lot of work, but.
Someone who's coming to Bisbee for a day trip might say, oh, we should come back and spend time with this.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, that, well, I think that's great.
Yeah, yeah, I know they, well, the, the Camp Nakco has a story map. Maybe that's what you were saw.
It was in a online.
Story map.
Yeah, GIS, so essentially.
Yeah, that's what it is and if we could have something like that.
Interactive maps, yeah.
How they did theirs and see if we can follow in their footprints.
Yeah, I, I wasn't involved actually in that portion of it, but, uh. I know she was great, she kept in touch with me and.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Yeah.
I can't remember who it is now, but Steve would know.
Yeah, no, the, the story map is, I, you know, and I've done, I've done of simple ones before. Um, I think that with a story map, you really, um. You really, if you could get a bunch of contributors to give their elements, you know. Cause like I think that, assembling a story map is one thing, you know, I could do that. But I would really need to just have all the resources that everybody has, you know, from all the contributors to. Populate it, you know, and to use it, but I mean, you know, I mean, that's something we could possibly do.
But you know, there, there's an untapped resource only ninety miles away is the, uh, U of, U of A, which. Has incredible people and you were one of them.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe there's somebody who's doing a thesis project or something like that that would be interested in. That being the result of this, you know? I know in the architecture school, they say this is the most diverse, uh, architecture. Uh, that you can see in any one place in Arizona.
Yeah, in Arizona, totally, huh? The vernacular, essentially.
There, there also might be a, a connection to mine with the, um, Arizona University. It's the gentleman who wrote, um, Going Back to Bisbee.
Oh, yeah.
He's passed away, I understand.
Yeah.
But, and that was relatively recently and, but annually he had students come to, you know, they would have some kind of recreation of, I mean, they came to Bisbee. They came back to Bisbee on a regular thing, so maybe there's still some remnants of that. The, um, Main Street Museum is in the process of working with, um, Arizona University right now to put together an exhibit of. I don't know, prehistoric, but definitely pre-city Bisbee kind of. Like that, so.
Oh, okay.
And that's with the museum.
That, that's the fair store?
I'm sorry.
The fair store?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The Restoration Museum.
Yes.
Yeah, that, I forget who wrote that.
So they're already working with the, with the, um, museum, if that's a department.
Yeah.
University.
Yeah.
And they all came down, there were like twelve of them came down one day to check the whole thing out, to see what we were gonna do. It's like. Douglas was amazed with their interest.
Wow.
Everyone likes a reason to come to Bisbee.
It's true.
That's right.
All the people that come here.
They can, and let's do it for the weekend.
Out infrastructure projects, yes, bridges, tunnels, yes, everything, they come down and they come, oh, it's so great.
Yeah.
So I think, so all the elements that you've listed here are all really positive. I think, um. You know, we, I know. I'm not sure how you're planning or how you're suggesting we work it in, whether we do it as a heading and then a number of. Items under that goal or, uh, water and wastewater, we have a section, we can work something into. It's an open space we do.
Yeah.
But I don't think we have a environmental and sustainability.
Yeah, there, it's, it's, there, it's kind of a brief element in the, but it's not like a featured section on its own.
And, and the community arts and culture, if we could work those in.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I'm gonna work on expanding these and, and getting, you know, and then, you know, coming up with policies and then taking into the. To people and bringing it out, you know, to the public and stuff, so, um.
Sorry, did you start talking about development?
Oh, I haven't started talking about that. So the last one I was gonna mention was the, uh, cost of development element, right? So, um. Essentially, I looked at the Town of Clarkdale's general plan. Um. For their cost element and they have, so, cause here we have, um, you know, uh, it, it's like we have the goal of requiring new developments to pay their spare share. Not unduly burden existing residences. Uh, exist, you know, supports developing areas with existing infrastructure, kinda like the overlays that we were, you know, we've been talking about. Uh, services where extensive infrastructure can be re, readily be made without. Having to like lay down a sewer and water pipes that are like two miles long, it's gonna cost millions of dollars, you know? Um. So, uh, one, uh, in Clarkdale, they, some of their goals were. Um. Ensuring that proposed improvements to town infrastructure, et cetera, are developed and planned to benefit new and existing residents and businesses. Um, it talked about, um, identifying costs associated with expanding public services, thinking about ways to get funding to expand public services. Uh, they talk about developing impact fees, which I don't think we. Not that I deal with, impact fees here. Um. So, um, and then ensuring that development occurs in a rationally and fiscally responsible pattern. So it starts with financing options. Uh, talks about reimbursement districts, special taxing districts. Um. Pro, public, private partnerships, which we tried to, have to, to try to do that with the Sierra Cobra. Um. Grant funding, which we also are working on US Department of Agriculture, which we also talk with them on, for example, our sewer lateral projects. So we're doing a bit of that, but we don't really have any policy that really points to doing that stuff. We're kinda just doing it as a matter of course, but it'd be nice to outline. Sort of like ways that we could really think about what we would wanna do to, in the future for funding elements, so. Um.
Impact fees seems important.
Yes, yes, no, you're right, I, I think so. I also think about impact, with, with impact fees. If you were, if you got somebody to build something that would be more on the affordable side, you know, you could waive the impact fees to. Incentivize a little bit of carrot stick.
I think incentive, and it seemed counterintuitive to the first line of this, which was, uh, uh, require new de, new, new development to pay its fair share. But I think incentives are really important.
Yeah.
Um, I, in my life, have seen cities that give away surplus properties rather than sell them.
Yeah.
If it's been determined that the, the future outcome of it will be more beneficial to the city.
Yeah.
It's, it's like, uh, what is it, Hillcrest? You know, I almost felt like, you know, I was involved in that for a long time. But I felt like it should have been given away because that six hundred thousand bucks that, that we were looking at. I think would have come back to us in the, in the long run. I think would have come back to us in the, in the long run, certainly it would have. And it would have benefited people and now it just sits, I don't know if it's, I don't know where it stands, you may know better than I, but. Uh, or that development out on, uh, uh, you know, where the school is over here in San Jose. You know, I, maybe some of that should be reduced, I don't know, but. Or some of those narrowly toned we, we have. Yeah, and I know we've been, we've been working on that for a while and, and sometimes it's better to give the thing away. And by giveaway, I mean, it may have a fee, but it should also have date certain and achievable goals. That if the person doesn't fulfill them, the property comes back and somebody else can.
Yeah, that's true, well, what, what if I said that we, we, we have these properties and. We saw that at Princeton, practically giving them away, no, it's like.
Well, it feels like it, yeah, but sometimes it's, that's the prohibitive thing, is that if you have to add. To a house that could sell for two hundred thousand, if you have infrastructure improvements that have to cost two hundred thousand. That house isn't worth fifty thousand, cause now you're in the hole for fifty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And where I always seem to see, reading about, and this is on a larger scale, is with future tax breaks.
Future tax breaks.
Maybe that's more for business type things rather than housing or anything like that, but I, I guess.
Well, that's about the G plot.
This situation is what we wanna incentivize or decentimize.
Yeah.
And how and what we have wanna have qualified if it's possible, if, uh, does a developer need to approach the city? I guess it does, I guess they need to approach you.
They usually do, you, you know, they, they shouldn't be doing much of a development without approaching the city. If you're talking about someone building a house to rent or sell, they don't, you know, they'll come to the city for the permits and everything.
How about something like the, uh, development up in Benson that I think has been underhauling for several years.
Um, yeah, or the one in Sierra Vista that never got off the ground.
Yeah, how much does the city in Benson, maybe it's not even in Benson proper, but does the city still have say? Or then it's all the county, does the county talk to you?
Yeah, the county, it would probably be a county issue if it doesn't, if it's not in city proper, but the impact of that.
How many thousands of people are gonna need housing that are gonna be working on the construction of a new port in Douglas? And, and is there a master plan in the county to house them or is it just gonna affect all the surrounding areas?
I know everything in Douglas is very expensive.
Supply and demand.
All the housing in Douglas is, and the building, empty storefronts and things like that.
You say it's expensive.
It's expensive, yeah, it's very expensive.
Do you think that has anything to do with it?
Oh, I, I think it might, yeah, it should be, yeah, cause it's part of that infrastructure money.
Well, this used to be a bargain.
Yeah, it used to be, yeah, not too long ago. And I'm sure you can still, yeah, you'll probably still find it, but I will say that this area of Bisbee and Douglas and. And probably Sierra Vista, although I don't pay much attention to the real estate there and, um. I don't mean to be harping about Maine, but, you know, the main prices for housing are way cheaper per square foot than, than Bisbee.
Wow.
Way cheaper.
Well, Sierra Vista's more expensive, it's, it's crazy, it's, it's a lot.
It's a city, it's an actual city with things going on, you know, Bisbee's a suburb of Sierra Vista essentially, or. An enclave or something, I don't know what you'd call it, but, yeah, but I just find that square, per square foot, that this is very expensive.
Yeah, it's too bad.
Um, but it, maybe it's just the main isn't catching up, but it is, you know, is this what the market can bear? I, I, you know, when people come up on the D R B and say, I can't afford to do this. But they have a house that's gonna sell for three fifty. Can you afford to put in good windows? Probably, you know, if you bought it for the price of, I know when things were eight years ago, they were cheap. Anyway, that's not.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, I was, I was thinking about finding stuff, like housing, land, okay, uh. Let's see here, uh, yeah, that's about it, uh, develop funding formulas to ensure there is adequate capacity at public safety services, okay. It's, uh, ensure adequate infrastructure capacity exists, uh, what else? Yeah, it's interesting, um. Thinking about ways that we can get development here, because we definitely need more housing, you know? And we have space to build more housing, you know, we, it's not like we, we don't have any room. I mean, Old Bisbee is the, is sort of like where people that come here would wanna go, but, um, you know. It's, it's kind of a tight little area, you know, but.
Interestingly, they're moving, a lot of the people from Old Bisbee are moving into Warren. You know, sort of in their older age, they don't have to climb so many stairs.
Right, so that's the thing, and, and they're selling them to people who turn those, their houses into Airbnb, so.
Well, that's, yeah, maybe, that may be, although I, it seems like Airbnb is not as big a deal as it used to be.
I think it's still ma- making a dent in the housing market though.
But there's also, you guys have been working, I know, and I know Havi has. How do the regulations for housing, how do you modify them? So that they, somebody, you know, can make an affordable house, it's almost impossible.
Yeah, well.
Make an actual affordable house here.
The only, the best way to do it, I think, is to, is to scale up and do multi-family, you know? Not, and not even like big apartment complexes, either just, you know, like building a duplex for the, you know. Like separate Bisbee-Nakco, you know, like you actually get two houses and you're spending a bit, a little bit more, but. Not as much as two separate houses, you know what I mean, because you're running, you know, some of the costs are shared, so, um. Yeah, that's, that's an interesting.
But also that you guys have been working on what's a modular house, what's a manufactured house, what's, you know, cause I think. The manufactured, if you don't put in the sort of stigma of it being a trailer.
Yeah.
If it's a manufactured house that.
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, has just been manufactured in a factory, that's a whole different animal.
Yeah.
And it actually is a better house because the people have been working indoors, building it, you know?
But they say, are, are, are the word that we use now, we're going to be saying, factory-built home.
Yeah, I think that's a good term.
Yeah, trailer.
Yeah, well, there are trailers too, but that's, yeah.
I mean, yeah, there, so anyway, but yeah, so that's everything that I have for this meeting, um. I, um, let's see if there's any other notes, uh.
Did you get what you wanted from us?
I did, I did.
Do you still have questions about these that we, you haven't covered or you're not sure if you're incorporating them or not?
Um, you know, a lot of the stuff that you've given me has been very useful and very helpful, you know, um. I think that you, talking with you all has helped me to really take and I, you know. Uh, uh, a lot of these ideas that I've been looking up and thinking about. And helping, and helping me take it and fit it within the context of Bisbee, because you all, you know, live and work here and have been here. For some time, a lot longer than I have, um, and it is really helpful to get your, you know, because you, you take what I have. And then you can expand upon it and, um, it helps me to just think about how it can work in the context. You know, for the city, and then, and then in addition, from what I've gotten from you all, I can take that stuff and kind of incorporate it into. The policy goals and, and update them, and then I can take that to, um, you know, the next level, which is gonna be taking it to. Uh, state, other stakeholders in the community, the council, council members, um, and then. Community members and I can, um, you know, you build upon it even more there. So yes, it's been very helpful.
Will we be involved in, uh, some of the stakeholder meetings?
If you want to, yes, because we're, we're gonna be, so, you know, we're gonna be, um, doing a, oh, uh, let's see. We're gonna be doing an, an event at the Annex. Kind of like the one that we did in Old Bisbee at the library, you were there, right? Um, but, um, so we'll, we're gonna be doing some of that. Also, you know, if you want, um, you can always look, you can always call me or stop by and, and I can show you what I'm working on. You know, cause I'm taking a lot of policy goals and I'm, you know, I'm updating them and kinda making them more, kind of reflect. More, uh, I guess, what people are talking about now and, and also just standards and best practices. You know, considering that so much of that stuff has been written from twenty years ago, you know? So really kinda taking it to like the next level in terms of like timelines, but, so yeah, but if you'd like to, I, you can, I can always show you the. The document and I think you can have access to the doc, to the policy document and I have your notes that you've left on there and. Um, I'm going through there line by line right now, I'm looking at a lot of things and I'm, and I'm redlining new stuff, adding, adding policies. I'm putting all the new policies in red, I'm adding changes in red and I'm, and I'm striking, doing strike through on stuff that I'm. Going to be getting rid of or moving or, you know, and then adding the new wording for a lot of stuff. So a lot of it is really building upon it, and lots of, I'm, I'm kinda keeping it the same because it works, right, it reflects kind of. What we are, what, you know, what we still wanna do, so.
I'm always interested in the public comment.
Yeah.
What, what people are saying at some of these get-togethers and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's great that you're putting these tables all over because I think that, that small access to information. Um, and input that people can give is, is a little more personal.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I know we have talked about, uh, open house at some point, is that still in the future? Or did you decide to go with the tables instead?
Uh, we're, we are gonna do the, the open house at the, uh, at the Annex.
Well, the Annex, that one, so we'll have one in, that we had an Old Bisbee and one in the Annex.
Yeah, and then.
Take care of it.
Well, actually, then we may have some more, you know, I mean, you know, I, I think having the tables is a good thing, I think another open house, cause I, I do think, you know. An open house would be good for, um, uh, later on when a lot of stuff has been updated and, and I've got more information from everybody. We were talking about having an ice cream social at the Annex outside on a Saturday. Instead, you know, we get some ice cream and, yeah, kinda maybe do some neighborhood, some. You know, cause we're also trying to do a, a, a kind of more inclusive type of outreach where we can meet people where they are. You know, and like we're just, you know, cause I'm really trying to, cause you know, you go to a lot of planning meetings and stuff and it, it really is kind of like the. I'm standing here and you guys are all standing up there and, you know, I got the thing or whatever and, um. And I'm really trying to, you know, have something be where people of all walks of life and stuff can come and. Bring their kids for free ice cream or something, right, so.
You might wanna do one in Warren, the Boys and Girls Club, that's been a place for, uh, gatherings since. Yeah, and then that, that makes it more inclusive, you might wanna do one in.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanted to win in Bakerville, since it's close to Warren.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you had mentioned the Mariachi Festival, I think you might find that that's not very well attended by locals, maybe that's.
Oh, no.
Perception of that and whether that's good or bad or not, but I would guess maybe at best a third of the people there are gonna be locals.
Yeah, they don't go there for information really, they, they just go for the festival.
I see, yeah, I mean, that was one I was considering, but also, you know, we could, considering that we're gonna be doing Trump Retreat. Which I think could, gets a lot of those, um, a lot of the, um, maybe young families, you know?
That'd be great, but then they're also watching their kids at that time.
So, but, but, so that, that's why I'm gonna set up this, to the library, cause the library could really. Sort of have the attention of the kids while the adults.
Yeah.
You know, or I could have them, just at least get them to scan the QR code and do the sur- survey, right, yeah.
Yeah.
But the Saturday event's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I, I saw that and I was like. It's like.
More of those, it's gotta be easier to attend their events than to throw your own.
Yeah, that's right, glom onto their prog- their, their program.
And I'm sure they're happy to have you along.
Oh, they are, yes, absolutely, so, um, alright, so that's all I have, yeah.
I'm actually adjourned.
A second.
Alright, thanks Felicia.
Thank you, Michael.
Alright, I'm gonna talk to you, talk to you soon, bye. Alright, six thirty-eight, hey, we did, we did a solid hour.
Say hello to Tracy.
And we have a meeting next week, right, a real meeting.
Two weeks, you know.
Is it in two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
Is this still on?